With liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standard for a moment of silence for those who are serving to protect our freedom overseas and those who have lost their lives in doing so? Okay, the first item on the agenda is to set the dates for the November meetings. The workshop will be on October 29th at 7:00 PM and the board meeting will be Monday, November 3rd at 7:30 PM. I have a special presentation to make before we start. Isabel, would you come on up? Okay, the board and I picked someone for an award that is very, very near and dear to us, the Andrew C. Hagerty Award. And we started this award to recognize a man who has served this village so very, very well and for so very many years, in addition to lived here with his wife Isabel and loved Suffolk, loved his community, loved the people in it, and always went above and beyond to make sure that Suffolk had what it needed. Andy was seen volunteering in so many different community service organizations. He believed that being involved in your community was something that everyone that lived here should do. And here in Suffolk, we're very, very lucky to have what I would like to call a Suffolk family. Suffolk, the Village of Suffolk is more like a family than just a municipality. So, that being said, each month we honor someone who we feel is what Andy believed in, that outstanding person who gets involved in their community, who's always there to say, "How can I help?" And this month's recipient is that person. He lives his life in the true spirit of Andy Hagerty. He has always seen behind the scenes of here events in the Suffolk community, in the school district, behind the scenes of our cameras, lending a helping hand wherever he can be of assistance. I know Andy was actually quite fond of him and I know that he was also very involved in a lot of service organizations that Andy was involved in and events that Andy was involved in. So it is my distinct honor and pleasure to announce that Bruce Simon will receive the Andrew C. Hagerty Award for outstanding service. So Bruce, we have a nice plaque for you and your name will also go on the plaque on the wall outside of Village Hall and be there forever. And we also have a little gift certificate here for you from Artellos Restaurant. We hope that you will take your wife for a night out and enjoy yourselves and not be out running around and helping others. We hope that you'll take the night to enjoy yourselves. And it also comes with babysitting services. Deputy Mayor Joe Corrigan volunteered to watch the children for the evening, so you guys have a night out and enjoy. And thank you for all you do here in the village. Isabel's gonna use a smartphone to take a picture. Go ahead, Ms. Isabel, you work that smartphone, girl. Look at Isabel. Nice. Beautiful. Okay, moving along, we have the continuation of a public hearing with the Limitless Taxi for a taxi cab license. The applicant is Biensee A. Rosa?
Yes.
Biensee Rosa?
No.
Limitless Taxi, is the applicant here?
I don't see her.
The applicant is not here. Okay, so I guess we wanted to speak with the applicant, was she, she was made aware of the public hearing, correct? Okay, so I don't know if the board would like to proceed with it. I'd like to suggest that we table it until the applicant can be present for the hearing. We'll continue it, I guess.
I would say that.
Yes, okay, I have a motion to continue the public hearing. She's in the next board meeting, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Next up is our fire department. Chief is not here. Okay, we will move along to culture and recreation, Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. A few things that we have coming up in the village. This Saturday, October 18th, we will be having the window painting. This is in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce where we'll go downtown and paint the windows on the village shops. So we have quite a few groups sign up this year, so weather permitting, we'll be outside. If weather is not permitting, we'll be inside, but it will happen on this Saturday. On Tuesday, October 21st, the Lions Club will be having a blood drive at the community center between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Friday, October 24th, there will be a LEAD event, which LEAD stands for Life Exists Against Drugs. It's a high school group and they'll be in the community center between 8:00 and 11:00 PM on Friday, the 24th. We have our annual holiday parade, Halloween parade. On Sunday, October 26th, it starts at 2:00 o'clock down at commuter lot A and then it will come up to the gazebo where we'll have refreshments and the costume judging contest, so 2:00 on the 26th. At the community center on Friday, October 30th, we're going to have a Girl Scout event and that will be from 6:00 to 9:00 at the community center. And one of few things for save the date, we have the Veterans Day Parade, which will be on Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 AM. And then on Thursday, December 4th, we'll have the parade and the tree lighting. And then on Sunday, December 7th, we'll be having here in the auditorium, the Pearl Harbor Ceremony. And on Wednesday, December 17th, the Hanukkah Memorial Hour at the gazebo. And that's it.
Thank you, Kathy. I also wanted to thank you, Kathy, for the wonderful job that you did with Suffolk Day. It was such a wonderful success. And I also want to thank you for assisting yesterday with the parking authority. Yesterday, we dedicated three of our parking lots to, the Village Hall parking lot to Calisto, Charlie Anaya Jr. and Andrew Fredericks. We did the B lot for Richard Posco and John Ginley. And we did the A lot for Ben Walker and Vinnie Tamboro. So I wanted to thank you for assisting with that. It was a wonderful service, very well attended by the community. And it's gonna be so nice to be able to remember these men who lost their lives far, far too early. It's a great tribute to them and I hope you will all take an opportunity to look at the memorials as the parking authority did such a beautiful job with them. So I thank the parking authority and Kathy for making sure the event went off so beautifully. And thank you for all who attended.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sure some of you are here for the Orange Avenue Zone Change. I would like to read a letter that I received at 3:00 PM today from Orange Avenue Associates Attorney, Ira Emanuel, and it says, "Dear Mayor Beto, I represent Orange Avenue Associates. My client hereby withdraws its petition for creation and mapping of the TDD Transit Development Zone for Orange Avenue Properties. It is apparent that we cannot come to an agreement with the Rhode Island Central School District under the current circumstances, very truly yours, Ira Emanuel." So we will not be voting on the zone change as the applicant has withdrawn their request for the zone change, so there will not be anything for us to vote on. So I just wanted to, anyone who's here solely for that purpose, I just wanted to let you know that there will be no vote.
Mayor?
Yes?
It's my understanding, and Mr. Magrino certainly could comment, is that once this petition has been withdrawn, that if they decide that they might want to do this again, that they would have to start from square one, is that correct?
Yes, they'd have to do a new petition and it would have to be circulated, you know, to the involved agencies.
Okay.
Okay, so we will move along in the agenda, the grant writer. No, he's not here, but he does have a report. There is a member item award from Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe. This is the second award for the Clifford Theater this year from her. The first award was the $2,000 used for reimbursement of some of the 2013 play expenses. The play was Legally Blonde. The new $3,000 award will be used to reimburse the village for some of the 2014 play expenses, Hello Dolly. The New York State Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation is overseeing the award implementation and they are the ones who will actually be giving us the money for the grant. And the New York State Department of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation is requiring a resolution to allow me, the mayor, to sign all the necessary paperwork and submit it. Do you have the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a motion to, for the mayor to sign the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne is not here this evening, Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you, Virginia.
You're welcome.
Moving along, we will, I don't have the noise ordinance. Okay, so we'd like to set a public hearing. It has been brought to my attention that on Saturday mornings, there is an overwhelming amount of construction noise outside people's windows, these are their weekends, these are their days off. In reading the law, it actually states that the week is Monday through Saturday, okay? Saturday is not included in the weekend. It also further goes on to say that although you can't mow your lawn until 9:00, construction workers can actually start their day at 8:00. So we will be holding a public hearing to move the Saturday time to start construction of any kind or any kind of, good evening, gentlemen, any kind of lawn mowing or any kind of noise will not be till 9:00 in the morning. So I would need someone to motion to set that public hearing.
November the 3rd, what time?
November 3rd, 7:40.
7:45, 7:40.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, I'm sure you're probably wondering why all of our police officers are here.
I am wondering. Why are they all here?
I feel safer.
They're all good men, they're in the house.
Clark, today is your last day here in the Village of Suffolk. Actually, I'd like to invite Clark's family up with me. So Kaylee, Ruth Ann, Debbie, come on up.
They're hiding in the back.
They snuck in, Nikki, come on up. Come on, John. Stay in there. Ruth Ann would like your credit cards now. Okay, Clark, so it's time to let you know that we, the Village Board, feel that there is no other person in this village that is more dedicated to the youth of this community. You have implemented so many opportunities and programs for children here in the Village of Suffolk that there's not a child in this village that doesn't know the name Officer Clark or Chief Clark or Clark Osborne. Parents are thankful to you for all the DARE programs that you've put together that have given their children the opportunity to learn the do's and the don'ts and the good and the bad. So, that being said, myself and the Village Board have decided that the new Temple Lane Park is going to be the Chief Clark Osborne Heroes Park. We will, we will be having a formal ceremony, I hope you will all join us. We'll make sure that Chief Osborne puts it out on Nixle and all of the social media and I hope you'll all join us. I can't think of a better way to have a park that children will enjoy in your honor because of all that you do. Thank you, Clark.
I want to thank you, it was funny when they all walked in thinking, "Am I retiring today, don't know about it?" Thank you, thank all of you. I work with the best whipper officers in the world and dispatchers and personnel and I thank you guys for coming. I said John downstairs, we were talking, and he told me to come down and get Chinese food, I'm going, "He came from Monroe to get Chinese food?" So, great job, thank you guys, all of you. Mayor, thank you and my family. I honestly got, have no idea. I didn't even see my family sitting up there. I was never a detective, I guess, so it's all right. But thank you so much, all of you. It's an honor and I look forward to putting that out there and out there hockey league, I look forward to getting about, we were just, I was laughing before I came, I was refereeing practice in my uniform, I had to come here. A lot of the parents were staring over at me, I'm like, "It's okay, it's okay," because I knew I had to come here at 7:30, so. But thank you to all of you and Clark, all you guys, everybody, I appreciate it and all of you up here, thanks for the honor, I had no idea. Thank you.
So everyone knows there'll be a lot of patrols down on Monaghan Drive now at the park, you're gonna see Clark there a lot.
Thank you guys very much. I'm pretty impressed you guys are working, thank you very much.
Wait a few minutes.
That's nice, very nice.
Isn't that beautiful?
Again, another extension of the family here in Suffolk. Thank you so much for all of you coming out.
Kathy, I'm so gonna get a picture, sure.
Hold on, everybody, Frank wants your picture.
Hang on, guys, quick. Tell the guys to come back in. Gonna take a picture with all the guys. Yeah, come on down, guys.
No, no, no. You want them to stay there.
Joe's doing a selfie and she doesn't like those.
Can you do a selfie?
I don't know.
Once again.
Isn't it awesome?
It's a good thing he's got a white shirt on.
I know, he stands out.
I said, it's a good thing he's got a white shirt on, he stands out.
Tune into Facebook tomorrow to see that picture.
Thank you. Chief, it's you up. You're up. I really sincerely appreciate, honestly, God, I know it, and you know when you hear all those steps coming in behind you, I'm thinking, "This is not gonna be good." I heard footsteps coming, not knowing it was them, so, yeah, Mayor, boy, thank you, sincerely, I really mean that, thank you. I just have a couple of quick things I have. Number one, with the only item that's on the agenda is to, I'm looking to appoint another police officer, which is an replacement from an officer retired earlier in the summer, and that officer's village resident, David Figaro. David lives here in the village and is a police officer and traffic this time. And obviously, David would have to go through the Department of Personnel for clearance, but I'm just asking the board to nominate him tonight so I can get the clearance, Phil.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. I thought it was an appointment, your appointment, and then we confirm.
Oh, it's my appointment, I knew that. Do I have a motion to confirm?
Yes.
Yes, you do, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you so much, Mayor, thank you, boy. Just a couple of quick things for the, just for the record, we are very fortunate, we were named out of over 575 jurisdictions in New York State. We are named number five in crime rate, which is the highest in the whole region, and amongst the lowest crime rate amongst over 575 agencies in the state. So having that ranking, we got married, that was coming, the mayor called me one day and said, "I'm gonna forward you an email." And she received the email from the state, so I just want to thank all of you for your support, because anytime I come to you for manpower equipment, you enable me to have it and that makes a huge difference to keep that crime rate down, so. I thank you for that. We also have another good thing, last week we became the accredited, in 2009 we became an accredited agency. That means that you have to meet 133 standards that the state of New York puts together to be what they recognize as a professional police department. Only 20% of the departments in the state received the status and we received again just last week after five years, 2014, so that's a huge step for our promise, and thank you. That's the credit for the officers and the personnel I work with, it was huge. We had a dinner, thanks to Kathy, and we had just over 400, close to 400, and a dinner Friday night, great crowd. And the last dinner I worked on was Charles and Teddy and with the, the mayor was the RMJ crossing. We're doing well, we have spoken to, we're trying to get Charles and Teddy, in contact with them. Charles and I were talking today, we are excited to meet tomorrow over logistics, which we pretty much haven't figured out, so we're right on target, I need to be in. Thanks to somebody in the job for giving us $250,000, that's not a lot, so that's the reason we can do some. And that's all I have, man, I'm just gonna take a quick run downstairs and thank you, I'll be right back. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you all know that we had a press conference here in Village Hall and Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe has secured the capital funds for us for the emergency crossing. We are now going to be able to put together a, it's okay, go ahead, Clark. Yeah, I'm okay. So we'll be able to go, put a crossing over at Dunery Court is the plan and when we have rainstorms and flooding, which will flood out the two entrances into the West Ward, which happens during bad rainstorms, we will have access to the West Ward for emergency vehicles as well as the residents in an emergency situation can get out of there. So we're very, very thankful to Assemblywoman Jaffe for recognizing the critical nature that we really truly need an emergency overpass over to our West Ward. And this also enables us, we, in emergency flooding situations, we've actually taken some of our emergency services equipment and staged it over there. So if there was a bigger emergency on, on the other side, on the side of the tracks, some of our equipment was kind of stuck over at the other side, making sure that if there was an emergency over there, that they could get some emergency service personnel to them. So we won't have to do that anymore. All of the equipment will, and personnel will be able to stay together and still access the West Ward. So again, a great big thanks to Assemblywoman Jaffe and to Charles Sawicki and to the entire board, Joe Corrigan, Bruce McClintock, I don't know if you're here, yes, he is, has done a tremendous amount of work on putting this plan together and of course, the chief, Clark Osborne, Mike Stark, everybody has spent an enormous amount of time in, in the preparation so that if we had gotten the money at some point in time, we would be ready to go and we certainly are. So it's very exciting news. So I thank the chief and everyone for, for all of your participation in getting that together. Okay, we have a public hearing, we need to set a public hearing for increasing the taxi cab fees. The standard scheduled fees for the Village of Suffolk taxi cabs would be amended. The licensing fee for new applications would be $250. The annual fee would be $225 per car and the taxi driver license would be $100 per driver annually. So I would need a motion to set a public hearing.
Motion to set a public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
Oh, we are having the public hearing, I'm sorry. You have that me confused on that. Okay, yeah, so this is the public hearing for the increase in taxi cab fees. If anyone would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Debbie, come on up.
Okay, I'm Deborah Tap, Deborah Taxi, tend to be known as Debbie Taxi, I'm over on Oakdale Manor. Like that? Now do I have to start over? Good.
Just speak a little louder so we can hear you.
Okay, can I talk about all of it?
Just the taxi cab licensing fees.
Yeah, the taxi stuff.
Yep, just the licensing fees, increasing the licensing fees.
Okay, my first question is, what do we get for the licensing fee increase?
Well, we haven't raised the taxi licenses fees here in the Village of Suffolk in quite some time, but we, I spoke to the chief because it's very difficult to sometimes in the, in the evening hours in the dark to decipher who is who. So what we've come up with is we're going to create a placard that is going to go on your vehicle that the officers will be able to recognize and identify immediately and better keep the unlicensed taxi services out of the Village of Suffolk. It'll be a little bit more visible for them, easy, easy to recognize and be able to start really cracking down on the taxi cabs that are, you know, in the Village of Suffolk without licenses.
Okay, we have four registered taxis in the Village of Suffolk.
That means that you have to meet 133 standards that the state of New York, um, puts together to be what they recognize as a professional police department. Only 20% of the departments in the state received the status. And we received, again, just last week after five years, 2014. So that's a huge step for our promise, and, and thank you. That, that's the credit for the officers and the personnel I work with, it was huge. We had a dinner, thanks to Kathy Hopps, we had, uh, just about 400, Tredjebully, of course, the 400, and a dinner at Friday night, great crowd. And the last thing I'm working on with Charles and Teddy, and with the, um, the mayor is the RMJ crossing. We're doing well, we have spoken to, we're trying to get Charles and Teddy to contact with him. Charles and I are talking today, we are actually gonna meet tomorrow over logistics, which we pretty much have figured out. So we're right on target, I need to be in. Thanks to, um, Assemblywoman Jaffe for giving us $250,000, that's not a lot. So that's the way we can do it, so. And that's all I have, man, we're, I'm just gonna take a quick run downstairs and thank you, I'll be right back. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, let you all know that, uh, we had a press conference here in Village Hall, and, um, Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe has secured the capital funds for us for the emergency crossing. Uh, we are now going to be able to, uh, put together a, it's okay, go ahead, Clark. Yeah, I'm okay. So we'll be able to, um, go put a crossing over at Dunery Court, is the plan. Um, and when we have rainstorms and flooding, which will flood out the two entrances into the West Ward, which happens during bad rainstorms, we will have access to the West Ward for emergency vehicles, as well as the residents in an emergency situation, um, can get out of there. So, um, we're very, very, um, thankful to Assemblywoman Jaffe for recognizing the critical nature, um, that we really truly need an emergency overpass over to our West Ward. And this also enables us, um, we, in emergency flooding situations, we've actually taken some of our emergency services equipment and staged it over there. Um, so if there was a bigger emergency on, on the other side, on the side of, um, the tracks, some of our equipment was kind of stuck over at the other side, making sure that if there was an emergency over there, that, uh, they could get some emergency service, uh, personnel to them. So we won't have to do that anymore. Um, all of the equipment will, and personnel will be able to stay together and still access the West Ward. So again, a great big thanks to Assemblywoman Jaffe. And to Charles Sawicki, and to the entire board, Joe Corrigan, uh, Bruce McClintock, I don't know if you're here, yes, he is, has done a tremendous amount of work, um, on putting this plan together. And of course, the chief, Clark Osborne, Mike Stark, um, everybody has spent an enormous amount of time in, uh, in the preparation, so that if we had gotten the money at some point in time, we would be ready to go. And we certainly are. So it's very exciting news. Um, so I thank the chief and, and everyone for, uh, for all of your participation in getting that together. Um, okay, we have a public hearing, uh, we need to set a public hearing for increasing the taxi, taxi cab fees. Uh, the standard scheduled fees for the Village of Suffolk taxi cabs would be amended. The licensing fee for new applications would be $250. The annual fee would be $225 per car. And the taxi driver license would be $100 per driver annually. So I would need a, uh, motion to set a public hearing.
Motion to set a public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
Oh, we are having the public hearing, I'm sorry. You have that me confused on that. Okay, uh, yeah, so this is the co- public hearing for the increase in taxi cab fees. If anyone would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Debbie, come on up.
Okay, I'm Deborah Tap, Deborah Taxi. Tend to be known as Debbie Taxi. I'm over on Oakdale Manor. Like that? Now, do I have to start over? Good.
Just speak a little louder, so we can hear you.
Okay. Can I talk about all of it?
Just the taxi cab, uh, licensing fees.
Yep.
For just the licensing fees, uh, increasing the licensing fees.
Okay, my first question is, what do we get for the licensing fee increase?
Well, we haven't raised the taxi licenses fees here in the Village of Suffolk in quite some time. But we, um, I spoke to the chief because it's very difficult to, sometimes in the, in the evening hours, in the dark, to decipher who is who. So what we've come up with is we're going to create a placard that is going to go on your vehicle that the, um, officers will be able to, um, recognize and identify immediately and better, um, keep the unlicensed taxi, uh, services out of the Village of Suffolk. Um, it'll be, um, a little bit more visible for them, um, easy, easy recognized, and be able to, um, start really cracking down on the taxi cabs, uh, that are, um, you know, in the, in the Village of Suffolk without licenses.
Okay, we have four registered taxis in the Village of Suffolk.
That's correct.
We're kinda hard to miss, there's four of us.
Yeah, I, I, well, I understand that, we have new officers on board, sometimes the, some of the taxi cab, uh, uh, services change cars, yours, we know for sure.
There's no missing me.
But there's no missing you, but there is others, and, um, sometimes, you know, if a new, uh, company had come on board, um, there may be a question of if they are, if they're not, this way, we know who's licensed and who's not. They'll have the placards on their car, and, and that will be, it'll be, you know, a lot easier to handle.
I don't have an objection to a placard.
Mm-hmm.
My objection is anything, for the, for what my permit is. And, it's my own phone. Give me a second, I'll get that.
Then you first accidentally raised it that much.
No.
Maybe you want to read it, which is tall.
We raised it $25? Yeah, right, $25? Or 50? I can't remember now.
I think it was 20, 25 for the second car, 50 for the first.
That would keep going, that's alarming.
You don't have the old ones on.
Oh, my feeling is that we're not getting anything back for those fees.
So it's $50?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Debbie, I'm sorry.
My feeling is, is that we're not getting anything back for those fees, I don't mind paying them.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna know what I get other than rules. I lettered my van when I was told to letter it. Everyone knows, my vehicle is the only one that's lettered. Um, I have a restriction as to how much I can charge within the Village of Suffolk for a customer. Doesn't pay for me to work in Suffolk, when by the time I get from my last call to the customer, they're gone because some dude from Spring Valley ran through and grabbed them. And who knows what he charged? Who knows if he's fingerprinted? I am. I did that. Uh, we're supposed to have, so, the village is supposed to be inspecting the vehicles, the taxis that are here. We have a guy who withdrew his application because he didn't wanna be fingerprinted. Have another guy who you, I don't recommend any of you getting in his car. He's not, neither of them are village taxis, but they work. They work right in our neighborhood. And, there's no follow-through. If we, if some, there's a, um, if they're ticketing taxis that are on from Suffolk today, six months, a year, when do they do it again? They're back here the next day. I only get, I get rules. I don't get anything back, and that's, I want something.
Do you have a suggestion?
Oh, I've got loads of them. I'm really good at them. The first thing is, is that when they come into, when they're, all those out-of-the-village taxis, even the ones that are living right here, they're not marked. There's four of us. We'll all arrive. If we don't, for a meeting, then why are we here? There's Jamal. He came on two years ago. There's Pepe. I don't know if he speaks English, so I don't know how good he'll do in the meeting. And there's Gene, Brothers Taxi, everybody knows Brothers, 'cause Brothers and I used to sit in the lots together. I can't work to, oh, that's another thing. Does anybody know how long the driver is on the road?
This is just the fees.
I used to be there, 20 hours. When my daughter would sit in the car with me, she'd wake me up, I got my sleep because I slept right there. I had 20 hours a day on the road. I don't work nights now, 'cause it doesn't pay. There's a lot of things, and we're just, I don't care about paying more fees. But let's do something with them.
Debbie, you know what I'd like you to do? Um, can you do me a favor and write up your list of recommendations, things that you see, because you're out there?
Do so easily.
Absolutely, and could you drop it off to Village Hall, or let me know, I'll walk over and get it? Um, either way is fine with me. Uh, and let's, you know, let's do that, let's sit down, let's talk about them, let's see if we can find ways that can help you guys that are out there legally running your businesses, um, to, to make life a little bit better for all of you. I would definitely be, you know, anxious to do that.
Happily, I've been trying to do this for almost 20 years.
Okay, let's go.
Get somebody to listen.
Let's do it.
But there's one other thing, is that when you are becoming a taxi for the Village of Suffolk, you're not supposed to be working until you guys say, okay, you're now a taxi. There's one that's out there now with application, but he's not approved. One of the ones that isn't here tonight. Okay, he didn't follow the rules to begin with.
Thank you very much, Debbie. That's okay. Would anybody else like to speak?
This is on the fees.
On the fees.
All right, Jim Janatino, I just have a question on something Debbie said. Now, it, Rob, I don't know if you're gonna know the answer to this. If they get a summons in the village, is that a moving violation?
No, it's a, it's a village code violation.
So what if they get three or four inside of two or three months? What action can the village possibly take to keep them out of the village?
Yeah, at this point, the only, you know, in order to get points for moving violation, it has to be violation of the state vehicle and traffic law.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought, that's why I wanted to ask you.
What they, what, uh, I can tell you from my experience, as you know, being, you know, prosecuting in court.
I know.
Uh, I know the police department has done, uh, shall we call them, operations where they've, um, ticketed several, um, operators who don't have licenses. Yeah, I mean, basically, it's a fine, that's all that they can, that can happen in justice court, is that they get fined. And they do, you know, I know, and, and one of the things, at least when I'm there, that we do is, if they want to continue operating, we tell them, look, you have to go apply, and I, you know, um, most don't. They accept the fine, and, and that's it, but I know that some have, uh, taken the steps to go, you know, apply.
Yeah, it's just like something that's the cost of doing business to them.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know, it's an act, they, they don't seem happy paying the fine, I can tell you.
I'm sure they're not, but as long as they can keep going, they'll pay the fine.
Yeah, but, well, again, that's, the police are out there.
And what about letting?
They, they do bring a lot of the cases, I will say that.
What, is it, I don't remember the code, they do have to be lettered in the village?
I believe so.
On their cars?
I believe so, yes, yes. There, there are a, a number of, uh, requirements, and, you know, typically, that, you know, they don't meet any one of them, you know, not the least of which is that they're not licensed by the village. They have to be licensed by the village.
So then I guess they can get multiple fines when they're stopped. Point being, let's not make it easy for them to do business, let's make it very expensive for them to break the law. And that's a discussion I, I was hoping Clark would be.
Yeah, I was hoping he would be here too, because, um, actually, I, I sat down with Clark a few weeks ago, and, um, I had, you know, expressed my concern because, um, I was up at Good Samarion Hospital, and I was waiting for the valet to bring my car, and I see all of these taxis picking up, picking up, picking up, and I'm thinking to myself, this is ridiculous. So I, I sat down with the chief and I explained to him that I wanted him to really start sending out our officers to start coming down hard on these taxis.
I think they have, I think they have been picking it.
They have not, they have not stopped yet, they're going to continue to do so. Uh, we, we came up the placards, we feel like it's a quick, easy way to, you know, register.
I had suggested that to him also about six months ago, because they're floating all over the village, I mean, we all see them.
Right, so we're gonna do that, it's very easy then, you know, you know that they're not licensed here. And the other thing is that they have been given tickets for both lettering and for being, uh, picking up theirs in the village. And we have pictures of cars, we have, we've actually taken pictures of some of the, um, cars that have been coming into the village, uh, so we know who they are, um, they've been given to the police department, um, and they are, they are definitely taking it very seriously, and they're gonna start really coming down on these guys.
And as far as lettering, if they have to letter their cars, they can't be switching cars constantly.
Correct. Any car that they use has to be lettered with a placard.
So they, if they wanted multiple placards, they would have to pay more?
Well, they have to pay per car, so that particular car, like, Debbie has one, so she would pay for one, but you, if you add a taxi company and you add two cars, it's per car, and you get, would get.
Per driver also.
Correct, and per driver, but you get a placard for each, uh, vehicle that you register with the village.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, would anybody else like to speak regarding the fees?
Make a motion that the, uh, hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Do I have a motion to increase the, uh, taxi cab fees?
Motion to increase the taxi cab fees.
And it would be $250 for new applications, annual fee would be $225 per car, and a taxi driver license would be $100 per driver annually. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Uh, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Uh, I don't know what number resolution that is.
Can I have the whole folder?
Yes, it's, what resolution number is that?
It's down to number, it's on the folder.
Oh, okay.
Number 14.
Okay, so it's a resolution number 14 for the record. Okay, uh, Department of Public Works, Charles?
Good evening, Mayor, and the Board. I am requesting payment authorization for application of payment number five in the amount of $157,871 to Northeast Remsco Construction for the Wasteware Treatment Plant Digestor Upgrade Project, general construction portion. The total amount paid to the contractor, including these payments, is $630,462.75. The contract amount is $1,089,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I'm requesting payment authorization for application of payment number two in the amount of $32,837.93 to HVS LLC for the Wasteware Treatment Plant Digestor Upgrade Project Electrical Construction Portion. The total amount paid to the contractor, including these payments, is $67,063.86. The contract amount is $88,738.14.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I am requesting the mayor to appoint Mr. Brandon Kronk, currently a street department laborer, to the position of MEL-1 at the street department effective October 15th, 2014, at the pay rate of $21.96 per hour.
So moved.
Oh, no, sorry. Motion to confirm.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Looking right at the word of point.
I am requesting the mayor to appoint Mr. Lauren Vogel, currently a street department laborer at the, to the position of MEL-1 at the street department, effective October 15th, 2014, at the pay rate of $19.92 per hour.
Motion to confirm.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I am requesting the mayor to appoint Mr. Amos Morris, currently a street department laborer, to the position of maintenance helper at the Wasteware Treatment Plant, effective October 15th, 2014, at the pay rate of $19.92 per hour.
Motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I am requesting, uh, authorization to attend Southeast New York Stonewall Conference in Beacon, New York, on October 15th, 2014. The cost of the course is $125.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I am requesting authorization to attend Urban Forest Workshop located in New, Newburgh, New York, on October 17th, 2014. This course will be provided by the New York State DEC at a cost of $40.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I'm requesting authorization to attend the Stream Planning and Resilience Course in Middletown, New York, on October 22nd, 2014. This course will be provided by Cornell Cooperative Extension at no cost to the village.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are at audience participation, if you would like to come up to speak, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, Tom Zordan, 249 Parkside Drive, Suffolk, New York. Uh, for those who are not aware, I retired as of September 26th. And according to the Village of Suffolk's work rules, when someone retires from service, they're entitled to medical benefits paid for by the Village of Suffolk. So lo and behold, unexpectedly, I received a letter in the mail indicating that I should be signing up for COBRA at a cost of $771 a month, and if I don't do so by December 1st, I will no longer have medical insurance. Now, I'm presuming that this is a mistake, so I would like to know from the Board, will I be getting my medical insurance paid for by the Village of Suffolk?
Okay, Mr. Zordan, this is not something that I can just discuss with you at this time. Um, you have legal representation, and so do we, um, and we are corresponding through that legal representation.
So take that as a, you guys are saying no. Now, was that a Board decision?
Uh, there was no yes in my comment, and there was no no in my comment. My comment to you is that it's not something we can discuss with you here. We have legal representation, and so do we, and they are corresponding regarding this matter.
Again, did the Board decide this?
Um, I think I just answered to the best of my ability, Mr. Zordan, I'm very sorry that I can't discuss it any further with you.
So obviously, if, if you're saying this legal representation on your part, the answer would be no, so.
Um, I will not go on record as saying any such thing, you can just take my comments with you, that we have been, and, Mr. Zordan, you're very well aware, we have been corresponding through legal representation, that you have gotten for yourself, and we have our labor representation as well. So they will be discussing the matter, and that's really all the comments that I have.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Bob Morris, 24 Terrace Avenue, Suffolk.
Bob, put the mic down, yeah, good.
Okay. Uh, I, I just have a question, and I'm just not sure of it, and just for information. In May, you's made a, uh, you as the mayor said you were buying the VFW hall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is that something that the Board votes on, or how is that decided, uh, that you could purchase something like that?
Yes, the Board had voted on that.
The Board has voted on that?
Yes.
I see. Okay, though, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to speak?
Jim Janatino, I'm a little confused. When was the vote taken on buying the VFW?
Um, I don't have the actual.
Well, I've looked at the minutes and I can't find it. And unfortunately, I was at a New York Rising meeting, and I brought the subject up, and a vote wasn't taken, and the deputy mayor jumped all over me, saying I was being political, 'cause I wanted to know if a vote was taken.
Okay, well, first of all, um, none of the contracts have been signed yet, that's number one. But number two, I would have to look through the minutes myself, because I do recall that this Board did vote on, um, purchasing the VFW.
Do any of the Board members recollect the vote on this?
Yeah, I think it might have been in December.
Or January.
We'd have to look, Jim, I can get back to you on it.
You say in January, Joe, you didn't bring it up till May.
We didn't bring it up until May?
That's when it was brought up in the minutes. The statement was made, we are going to buy the VFW.
Okay, well, you know what, we haven't signed the contracts yet, Jim, so therefore.
I really hope not, 'cause I don't think, I don't think a vote was taken.
Yeah, if in fact, we find that it wasn't, um, as soon as we have the contracts to sign, uh, which we don't yet, because, uh, the VFW has to go through a process, um, through their governing body first, to even see if they can actually, um, sell it to us at, at the amount that we, um, they agreed upon to sell it to us for. So, um, the good thing is, is it's not a problem, as going forward, we will be able to do that.
I gather you wouldn't have a public hearing on the issue. I gather you wouldn't have a public hearing on the issue.
Um, I don't know that we have to, but if you wanted one, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I think you should, because unfortunately, we bought some property on Orange Avenue that we've been paying off for, I don't even remember how many years. Hasn't worked out well so far, may in the end, I don't know.
Hold on, hold on one minute. Switch tapes.
Okay, go ahead.
And I really don't think a municipality should be in the business of buying property from nonprofits or from anybody that owns property. We shouldn't be landlords. That property, and I'm sorry if they can't keep it, but I've made a suggestion to the American Legion people that maybe they should sit down and they can share space, because all these organizations are having a rough time. Their memberships are down, and I think it would be to both their benefit to try to share some space and share some expenses. And then they can turn around and sell their property and have some money in the bank so that they can function as an organization into probably distant future.
Okay, I just want to, and I have no problem having a public hearing on it, that, you know, I'm all about public hearings and getting public input. But I wanted to just quickly let you know that in the discussions about the building, it's going to be used for, a building that's going to be utilized as a daily operational building. We will probably, we're not sure exactly how we're going to separate, but we're trying to have a youth center and a senior center. And we also will be using it to create revenue by renting it out. And we also are going to be able to use it for the recreation program. The downstairs will be utilized for Kathy for the storage of our recreation equipment. So we have, we definitely, it's going to be a building that's going to be utilized by the village and the public. We're going to hold with the possibility of possibly bringing Bingo back there. We're looking at ways to create more revenue for the village through the building. And then we also will gain all of the parking permits there and all of the permit fees from that as well.
Now, I'm a little confused. We have a beautiful community center that, in my opinion, is underutilized. Why are we leaving another building for activities?
That's what we're looking towards, Jim. We're looking towards more activities and to get these centers more utilized. One being very much utilized by the youth of the community, and as well as our community to have events in. And the other one, to make more of a senior center, possibly even creating more senior exercise programs, more day programs for the seniors. I know we have chair yoga right now, but we're looking to expand on that as well. Kathy is looking into more, possibly maybe camp programs. So there's a lot that we could do here in the Village of Suffering with both buildings. And we certainly do need the storage spaces. We don't have very much storage space at this time for recreation. But if you want to stop by my office, I would be happy to go over all of the particulars of it.
I like the idea of more activities.
Definitely.
I just think we have a huge building that is underutilized.
Yeah, we're going to tailor them more towards...
So this will mean more insurance, more electricity, more water, which we don't pay for luckily, another employee, I'm sure.
No, not another employee.
So then how are we going to use both of them at one time?
We will only use, we will have one person who will oversee both buildings, and only for events will we call in extra personnel.
So then the building isn't going to be utilized to its full purpose?
That's why...
Because you're going to be using one at times and another at times.
Right, and when there's a...
So you're telling me, what you just said told me that you don't need another building?
I'm what?
You don't need another building if you're not going to be using them simultaneously.
No, I said, when we are using them simultaneously, we will call in extra personnel. But as far as maintenance of the building...
I will come and speak to you, I won't go on any further.
Yeah, yeah, please do.
My next question was, establish a recreation facility attendant position.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what would be the purpose of that person if we're only going to use one person between the two buildings?
Okay, so what the plan is for that is Elaine has two positions. She has a custodial position and a recreation position. We will be combining her two positions, and she will now take that title over. And the custodial work will be taken over by a laborer from already existing labor. So we're not hiring any additional personnel.
So we're using another person to care for the community center.
Another person, no, we're not hiring anybody extra.
I know you're not. But you're taking someone from the DPW or somewhere else, they don't grow on trees.
They don't what?
They don't grow on trees. They got to come from somewhere else to do the job that's being done by one person now.
Right, but we need custodial maintenance of the buildings.
That, to my knowledge, and I'm the one that appointed the person that's there, was half of that job.
Right. Unfortunately, we need one custodial person who will take care of the grounds and the maintenance of the buildings.
I just don't understand, and I'm not trying to be cute, that a village that's having a rough time with their budget keeps expanding and hiring and buying things.
We're not hiring...
When you are finished, and then you can go, please, I'll be more than glad to hear you. We don't have money for what we're doing now, and we're going to build another expense, and I don't know what you're going to pay for the building. I'm sure it's a hundred, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I don't know where this money's coming from. I wish you could tell me where it's coming from, because I'd be happy to listen to that And I notice we're hiring a new auditor, which I am fully in favor of, they're an excellent auditor. My only question is, what are we paying for it?
I have the contract, one moment. I was going to actually give, can I give all that information when we get to that portion?
Absolutely. Whenever you want to do it, that's fine.
Yes.
And my last thing is kind of, well, actually, there's two things. The rescinding of the request for the zone change, does that negate the pilot program for Orange Avenue?
Yes, they cannot go forward with the project.
That's not what I asked. I asked, is the pilot dead?
Right. If in fact they come back and reapply for the zone change, the pilot still is in place.
So then it is still in place if they return?
Correct.
Wait.
Yeah, can I get a legal opinion?
Well, that's something we, when the pilot agreement was passed, it was contingent on them getting zone change approval.
That's what I thought.
They haven't gotten zone change approval.
Okay.
You know, if they come and get zone change approval, it, you know...
Do you have to re-vote the pilot? That's my question. The pilot should be dead because they did not get the zone change.
But it's not dead, because he's saying to you, Jim, the pilot is contingent upon they get the zone change. So if in fact at some point they do get a zone change, then the pilot would be good.
Is that legally correct, Bob?
That's the assumption that we're going on at this point. My understanding, what, after Mr. Emanuel sent the letter, I discussed, all we discussed was the issue with respect to them withdrawing the zone change. The issue of the pilot didn't come up, frankly.
But we would have to withdraw that, correct? We would have to rescind it in order for it to not be...
Well, if they never come back, there's certainly no pilot.
Right.
If they never, if there's never a zone change or no application, there's no pilot agreement.
Okay. What if I, as a developer, come to you, is that pilot still good?
No.
Why not? I got a zone change.
Because it was, the applicant was Orange Avenue Associates, and you're not Orange Avenue Associates.
That I'm very aware of, right? Then I would request that the Board rescind the pilot, and in the event that the applicant comes back, negotiate a pilot. Don't leave it open-ended. Whenever he feels like coming back, he's done fifty percent of his work. I think the Board has to say, if you're going to do this, that's fine, take a vote on your zone change. If you're not going to do this, all bets are off. Come back and revisit the pilot, and maybe we'll get a better deal.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
One more thing, and this has to do with Clark. Since you got the award which you so richly deserve, we're going to hand you keys, and you're going to open it and close it.
How is that? And hand him keys to open it and close it.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak?
Trust me, we will sell the water someday, right? Seven, eight years, all right? Only because you brought a couple things up, Jim. Was there an understanding amongst this Board, and I'll start at the end with Frank Hagan, that you may want to buy that building, the, across the, West Ward over there? I mean, you discussed it, right? It was, I'll start on that end, we'll come towards this end. Did you, did you say, yeah, let's buy it, let's consider buying it?
Did we discuss it? Did we discuss this? Am I allowed to say anything?
Oh, yeah, you can answer.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and wasn't it, and I'm not asking you alone, I'm asking everyone, wasn't it a fair consideration that you were considering, yes, buying this building, correct, or not? I never heard anyone in this Board say, we're not buying this building, even though this came up before. I'm just curious. Did you, were you, and Ms. Corrigan also, and trustee, and unfortunately, Matt Burns not here, and Jack Mann, is this just like something that there was a dissension written and a difference? Or were you, no, there's a fair to say, I'll start at the end. Jack, did you say, let's buy this building also? Did you consider it? I apologize, Mr. Hagan. Did you consider buying this building? Did you think it was good for the village to buy this building?
Did I consider it?
Yes.
Everything that's brought up to the Village Board...
No, but did you think it was a good idea to buy it? Were you on board with buying this property?
I can't answer that.
You don't know if you were on board, okay. Okay, then I'm not going to go any further if you don't even know if you, so you don't know if you wanted to buy the building or not. So we're still discussing if you want to buy the building.
I can't afford it.
Right, now, another thing, all right? You also mentioned something about buying this other piece of property for the Village of Suffering, Jim, and you bring up my memory, you bring my memory back, okay? So I went and I looked, because I've heard people talk about this a few times. So I went back myself, okay, and looked in the minutes, and we had a unified Board that voted on the budget to put the building that we were selling for sale. We had Democrats, Republicans, Conservatives, Independents, Liberals, because there's so many political lines now. Everyone on this Board agreed, and they don't agree all the time, but they all say, yes, let's put that building up for sale, and let's put it in our budget, right? It wasn't one group, everyone agreed. From, and again, I'm just, because that's furthest away to me seeing, from Frank Hagan to Joe Corrigan to Tricia Bado, to Jack Mann and to a Mr. Burns who's not here tonight. They all voted for, you know, to sell it and to put it in the budget. So I've heard this mentioned a few times in the political arena, but it was a united front that did that, okay? So maybe there is questions to have, maybe we do sell the building. I'd like to know what people think. I'd like to know especially what Board members think and the public think, okay? But I don't think that this was just an arbitrary thing that was brought up. I think it was discussed and heard before, and I think it was a unified Board that even considered buying that property, huh? Not one that didn't, just like a unified Board that said, let's put the other building on Orange Avenue for sale. Now, we can go ahead, and we could start knocking down pilot programs and saying, here, good, and saying this is no good. I went to the school board last week, and I gave a speech, because my belief is that suffer needs to advance, okay? We need to go up, always in competition, just as there's good forces in life, there's bad forces in life, all right? And I'd rather more good forces in life move in than bad forces, okay? And if we don't, and if we don't consider that, and if we don't look at that strongly, down the line it's going to, we're going to be, we're going to be in trouble, okay? If we go ahead with the pilot program now, over the course of it, suffering will get, and I don't want someone to come up here, oh, you're off by thirty thousand or fifty thousand, over a million dollars in extra taxes, then we get that. You'd also get the extra business there. You'd also get the extra water and sewer there, okay? Now, there's other things that go into this, probably extra fire inspection fees and whatnot. But if you don't get it, we will get a decrease in taxation to the village, not counting the school board, not counting everyone else, because now they've come along, and these are real chemicals under there. That property, Orange Avenue, the main one with the hotel, was a battery factory way back when. They will get up to a thirty percent decrease in property taxes. So we will actually get less taxes if we don't do it, okay? So that's when our taxes will go up, if it's not built, not if it is built, right? If it is built, I don't think we're ever getting a tax, and none of this Board or any Board is going to come, I'm lowering your taxes next year by ten percent. It ain't happening, okay? But all we can do is hope for a lesser increase. I'm sorry to bother you, have a great day.
Thank you, Mike. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, trustees and Mayor Bado. Ernest Bonacore, Thirteen Lexington Avenue, Suffering, New York. I just have a question regarding the pilot and the withdrawal of the application this afternoon. Does the pilot have a sunset provision? Meaning, does Orange Avenue Associates have to get their zoning change in a certain amount of time, and they lose the pilot? Or is this something that is open-ended, and they can bring back any time, later this year, next year, or any time?
The, you know, it really is the zone first, the pilot. The fact that, you know, there's no, say, agreement if there's no change, as I said, with the perspective of Mr. Janatino. There is a contract to sell, the Suffering own property, that does have some timelines in there, deadlines, that, you know, they have to pay more if they want to continue to go, which haven't kicked in yet. But with respect to the application by Orange Avenue, it was an agreement between the village and the developer with respect to the zone change. So, I mean, if they come back, to answer your question bluntly, is there a sunset provision in there? The answer is no. It's conditioned upon the zone change. However, you know, and it's up to the Board, but if they come back shortly, whenever they come back, the Board has control with respect to whether or not to grant it and what it wishes to do going forward. So, you know, it's still out there, so to speak.
I'm Debbie Tap, I have a question about the pilot program.
Can you just pull that down, Debbie, so I can hear you?
Okay, how's that?
Great.
Okay. With, Orange Avenue Associates has the pilot agreement from, for the town, for the, I should say, the village. And now they don't have their zoning, they have been awarded, that they say they rejected, that they've been awarded a pilot agreement from the Town of Ramapo for the school district. Another builder comes in.
No, no. They were not awarded a pilot program by the, by the Town of Ramapo for the school...
For the school district?
The Article Five, is I think. The Article Five, but that has not been put into play.
Well, they were given it.
It was approved. It was approved, but they have not... Yeah, it was approved by the Town of Ramapo, however... It's not effective. Well, it's not that it's not effective, it's that the developer has chosen to continue to negotiate with the school district instead of...
Are they still continuing to negotiate?
Um, I have, I don't, I'm not really involved in their negotiation, so I don't really know.
That stands, so...
This is something that they've been doing between themselves. I know that I did receive a letter from the school district, and one of the paragraphs in the school district's letter to Orange Avenue Associates was that they indeed wanted to continue negotiations. Has any of that occurred? I couldn't answer that question on their behalf, but I know that there...
Let's set aside.
It was their desire to continue negotiations.
My question is, you get another builder in there, another developer, that supposedly has nothing to do with Orange Avenue Associates. Jane Doe Associates comes in and gets that zoning change because they don't ask for a Does it apply only to them? Or can Orange Avenue Associates buy back their property, or however they're in the position to? position to develop it? Because now the zoning change exists, but they have two pilots.
I'm not sure what your question is, but I think to, but I think to answer what I think you're getting at is, right now, there, there's no pilot with respect to the property because there's been no zone change. Right now, the application's been withdrawn, this board has not acted on it. The only way the pilot comes into play, pilots.
Orange Avenue only.
Right. The only way the pilots come into play is if there had been an approval, if the board had, you know, disapproved or what have you, you know, if there was no zone change, the pilots, there's no agreement on the pilot.
Well, they can't do anything without a zoning change, but if that zoning change is, take, it takes place for somebody else.
Well, again, the board, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I think the board has control. If somebody else comes in, it could be a different project, the board, you know, the board has discretion on, on many aspects of the project, as, as they exhibited in, you know, in reviewing this one. So, it's not that somebody else comes in and automatically they're in the same, you know, box as, as where we are, let's say, with Orange Avenue Associates. Every application is, is different, so there's nothing, you know, at this point, binding with respect to anybody else coming forward.
I'm just concerned that they, somebody else can get that zone changed, because once it's changed, it's changed, and then Orange Avenue Associates can come back and put into play the pilots that they were given. Because as it was pointed out, there's no sundown, sundown on it.
I mean, that would, you know, in my experience, that would be a likely scenario, because if, you know, if Orange Avenue, you know, wants to come back with the same project, that, you know, they could come back, I suppose. If another developer came in, you know, again, it, the board, you know, will, would review it and, and see the application, and again, the project would be the project, and, you know, I, I guess I'm not sure what you're asking, is, is, you know, if they got a zone change approval, could they then, like, sell it to somebody else? I, I mean, I.
Sorta. If I was a developer, I would start with the zone change, I wouldn't wanna touch the property until I know that I can work with it, and my, their hands got tied. I would start with the zone change, and I don't know anything.
Right, but I guess that's, that's the issue, that's why the board was looking at it, the totality of, of everything. I mean, if, if somebody else comes in with a different project and there's no pilot agreement at the time that it's approved, there's no pilot, that's it.
Okay. I would like it if the board could close down the project, if it could be that it's agreed, that it's reversed, I don't know how these things work, but, but it's an end. That if this isn't happening, that it be ended. That it gets closed down and that's it, it's done. Not that they withdrew.
Right, well, again, there's, there's no application, so there's really nothing for the board to vote on, and they can't prevent them or somebody else from, from applying again.
Mayor?
Sure.
I just wanna give a fast comment in, in reference to what she had to say, and that is, when the Orange Avenue Associates went to the town of Ramapo, they requested an Article V, and that would, if, that was accepted, this board actually could have voted for the zone change, but that Article V would have basically tied the hands of the school board, and the school board wouldn't have the discretion on the, on the pilot and the payment lieu of taxes. And this board said that we would not entertain a zone, told Orange Avenue, plain and simple, we would not vote for any type of zone change unless the school board proved, negotiated pilot with Orange Avenue Associates. So, I think they knew that, Orange Avenue Associates knew that, and so I think that's why they, they withdraw. I was really frankly annoyed when they, they went to the town of Ramapo and to get around the school board, and I think the school board was very annoyed. I'm finished, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed Malconis, Two Willow Drive. Two questions, one for the village concerning the, the Orange Avenue project. Do you have any type of plan to put this out as an RFP for proposals for any other builders? Have you considered that?
Oh, definitely, I mean, that's definitely.
Is that in the plan now?
If there's, I mean, I, well, I just got this at 3:00 today, so you have to, you know, you have to, I haven't done anything at this particular moment in time, because I've only had it since 3:00, but yes, I mean, that would be the plan if this, if this project is not going through, as that's what it looks like, then yes, definitely we would start to market out again. And certainly put our building on the market, you know, immediately.
And the new applicant, if there was one, would have to renegotiate a pilot if that was in play? Or is that pilot?
No, that pilot would not transfer to them, they would have to, yeah, if they wanted to apply for a pilot, they'd have to, you know, negotiate their own deal. That pilot is strictly only for this project and this developer.
Okay. But you do have some type of plan, maybe?
Oh, definitely, I mean, I think we would, we would definitely do the same thing that we've done before and, and, you know, market it and hopefully have someone else come along. It's just that, it's, you know, very gloomy out there for development and developers right now, I mean, I've spoken to a few of them, you know, for, I mean, what, what I'd like to truly see there, which is, was condos, and there's just not the market right now for them, but truly that's, was my vision for Orange Avenue. Right now, it's apartment market rate rentals, and for anything, you know, above that, there's just not the market for it, and builders, you know, contractors right now are just squeamish about building. And so, it's, it's gonna be difficult, it's gonna be a task, but it's a task that the village board has committed themselves to, because we truly believe that, you know, this area of the village really needs, needs to have something done there, and, I mean, that's been the contention of the board for many, many years. So, yeah, the answer to your question is yes. Do I have anything started at this particular minute of the day? No, but yes, we would, we would definitely need to, I mean, we, we, I think we all agree that something needs to be done there, so.
Okay, great, thanks. One more.
And obviously, the, you know, the perfect plan would be condos with no pilot, but in a real world, we have to make sure that we get the knowledge to know that that's not something that's gonna happen for probably quite a few years.
Okay, thank you. One other question regarding the possible buyout program that the village might initiate with the state in regards to flooding and Squires Gate. Did you actually apply or did you discuss it amongst the board?
They were actually at New York Rising just at this last meeting. Joe, you wanna update on that?
Yes, as you were as well. And that was brought to us that evening as you were in the meeting and you were told by Suzanne Barclay that the village had no knowledge, that this grant had been opened up once again. This is the same exact grant that we used on the other two homes that were taken down by Irene. The difference on this is that these are voluntary. So, because they're voluntary and they're still standing structures, the homeowners will have a choice on what they choose to do, which is much different than obviously the other two that could not move back into their home. Starting the November 3rd, Aaron Signs will be back in the area, because he does two weeks in, main two weeks here. So, I've asked him, because if we had known that this is the offer that they were going to be putting out at New York Rising, the village would have notified all of our homeowners, as we always do with anything that happens with Squires Gate, we would have addressed it just as we had, we have Elaine, we had Charles Sawicki and myself that worked on both of those homes, and I would, fair to say that we're pretty educated on how the program works, and we would have made sure that all the homeowners were there. So, I've asked Aaron to come in, speak to the board, so that the board gets exactly the same information that we were given at New York Rising, and then from there, we will invite all the homeowners, and we'll probably try and do that maybe in the same night, so it doesn't travel back and forth, or maybe we'll do it a week apart, whichever works best for him, and then we'll decide what we need to do and who's interested in the program, who's not interested in the program. And as you know, there's duplexes, which makes everything very unique, and with working with Albany for the last two and a half years on this, they realize the challenges that we have with that, as so did our, our other contact that we worked on with the other two homes. So, yes, the village is looking into it, and we are making the arrangements as soon as he is back in town.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Scott, Squires Gate. I wasn't gonna say anything, but.
Oh, but we know better.
Somebody, somebody opened it up. You're saying this is the exact same thing?
Correct. It's the same exact program. They funded the program by $19 billion this time, I think 19 million, yes.
Right, but I was at the same meeting.
Correct.
Now, there were givebacks that the other houses had to give, according to what this guy was saying, there's no giveback.
Oh, no, 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 there, what do you mean by giveback? See, insurance money for your basements?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
They said that if you used it for the house.
And you can prove it.
And you can prove it, right.
You, you then don't get that taken off the top of your home.
Right, those people could not do it.
Pardon me?
Those four houses, they could not use it for the house. They might have used it for something else, so that had to be deducted from their price.
Correct.
Okay. Second of all.
They didn't have a basement to fix.
Right. Okay, second of all, my concern is this, there's two families, both sides of the house. One side, no, no mortgage, he'll take whatever the, I believe the village will decide what the fair market value of that house is.
No, as we discussed at that meeting, there's two different formulas that, that you can use, and the formula is the market value the day before the storm, or you can go and we can get the assessed value and use the calculation. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the calculation.
Now, the storm you're talking about, the day, that's the same formula that they used before, the day before Irene.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And that formula is also up to seeing which number is best for the homeowner.
Homeowners.
It's not what, the village gains no money from you getting $400,000 or $500,000.
Oh, no, I know that, well, the village loses, because they lose, that's why, this is what bothers me. Any house that goes along with it, it's great for the homeowner, for me, for any homeowner, but the village loses, because first of all, you have, you have to determine how many houses.
Correct.
Will be done. There's roughly 140 houses.
Correct.
Now, suppose out of 140, 75 decide that they wanna go for it. Now, then the village, or, it has to be determined which house goes.
No, what we're gonna do as a board is we're gonna sit down and we're gonna review everything. No one's made any decisions on how this is being handled.
No, I know that, this is what's been running around in my mind, and the worst thing that's been running around in my mind is this. First of all, the village will lose a lot of taxes, that's one thing. Let's say that out of the 140 houses, let's say 50 houses apply for it. Let's say 20 houses get it. I'm just using those figures, because that's all the money is for. Now, once the village goes ahead and says, "Okay, everybody can sell their house", for, you know, right away, the word goes out, no, well, right now, there's still people looking to buy the houses, but once they find out that every house has the option of being bought out, what would go on in my mind is, they wanna get rid of the whole thing, but they don't have the money. Why should I go and buy? So, the people that are left in that development, after those people sell their houses, that's it. Those houses will never go up in prices and will basically never have been bought.
Those are some of the questions that we're going to pose.
That's a very.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Our most, biggest concern with this whole entire thing is, yes, the buyout sounds wonderful, but let's make sure that we're not hurting anybody at the end of the day with this program.
I wish there was some way that you can help the person, well, the person there with no mortgage compared to the person there that bought recently and has a high mortgage. I wish that there could be some, something done. Yeah, I agree. To make it available to them, but then you pick, you would pick two side-by-side houses against each other. Give them more because they need it.
And that's not how the, the village.
I know.
The village doesn't decide whose homes, it's up, it's a voluntary program for the homeowners. The village is applying on your behalf.
I know that.
And that's it.
So, this, so if there's only enough money for 20 houses and 30 people put in for it, somebody has to decide which 20 houses go.
And I don't know that that's what, that is a choice that we would even think of doing. We, but remember, this just happened on Thursday.
And there's a lot of.
I know, I know that, but suppose there's no money for the other 10 houses?
But, but, let's, let's not.
Somebody gotta make a decision.
Let's not go there, Richie, yet.
Okay.
Okay, let's not go there.
We have a lot of concerns.
There's a lot, a lot to figure about.
And remember too, you know, the quarry project is not off the platter. That funding is still being requested up in Albany and to the state, so that those fund, that funding is still being forged forward, as well as New York Rising. It's still a project to go out and look to see if it's a feasibility, they're gonna do some studies on it, it's still, it's still a steady project on New York Rising.
You mean the quarry, right?
So, we're still looking at both, yes, we're still looking at both projects to help the area as much as we possibly can.
Well, I think the quarry, it's not a guarantee of nothing, but it will definitely do something.
We're gonna do a feasibility study with New York Rising if the project gets approved. You've been to enough meetings, you know how it works.
I know, no, I know what's going on, but.
The quarry has not been taken off. We're still interested in getting the quarry done, we're still pushing for the quarry, for the $5 million. It's a question that happens every single month, it's followed up with constantly.
How could you push a little harder, though? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rich. Rich, just to let you know, I mean, there's a lot of concerns, we were not made aware that this would be discussed, and, and as, yeah, as a board, we have a lot of concerns, so they're all gonna be addressed.
There's a lot of work to do.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
No. There's a lot of work to do, we promise, and you will know everything that goes on. How could I, how could I not tell you what's going on? How could I not tell you what's going on? You're welcome.
Okay, so we will move along in the agenda. Village Clerk.
Okay, we have the approval of the special board meeting of June the 11th, 2014.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Okay. Approval of the minutes of special board meeting of June 25th, 2014.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the special board meeting of July 21st, 2014.
So moved.
The rest of us, yes.
Right. I abstain, as I finally missed one.
Frank, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Now, I'm asking for, to set a public hearing for three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue.
So moved.
Oh, set a public hearing, do you wanna do 7:40?
7:50.
7:50?
7:50 on November the 3rd?
On November 3rd, yes.
Okay. Hold on one moment, 10, it's 7:50. A second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Okay, set a public hearing for Campo E. Barron for taxi license and a taxi driver's license.
So moved.
Second.
You want this for 10:30 at 7:55?
That's fine. On, do I, motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
American Legion requests a Veteran Day ceremony for November the 11th, 2014. Permission to have a little parade.
So moved.
Second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Okay. We're going to establish the recreation facility attendant position.
Okay, this is not a hire, this is just establishing the position, we are not appointing anybody to that position.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. This is a resolution, accepting a proposal from O'Connor Davis LLP for auditing services for fiscal years ending May 31st, 2014, 2015, and 2016, with options to annually, to renew annually for fiscal. Hold on.
2015 to 2018.
2008. Okay.
2015.
2017 and 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Just to let you know, Jim, I believe you had the question on the fees for O'Connor and Davies. They are actually keeping the fees the same as they were when they left us at $44,000 and only increasing through $2,018,000 a year. You're welcome.
Okay. The next one is another-
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
The next one is another resolution. Increase total project spending for Project 2010-01 Water Tower Painting from $94,000 to $100,700. Funding is $16,000 transferred from the water fund.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Virginia. Finance? Mr. Mike Janito. For those of you who have not met our new treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, is, this is Michael Janito. Welcome to the meetings, Michael.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. One quick correction on one of those most recent resolutions you just passed. The Water Tower project was $94,700. Should go to $110,700. I think it's just a typo on the resol, but that's what it is. So, the one item of finance we have before you is, as you're probably well aware, in fiscal 2010, the village began the practice of borrowing money in advance of revenues received for water and sewer, commonly called revenue anticipation note. And it's been done every year from 2010 up through the present year. The most recent note became due, which was $1,550,000. And what this is, is a resolution before you asking you to adopt another resolution to borrow the money once again for the 2014-15 year. And I'd just like to know, as I mentioned to the board, I don't think this is really a, a very good financial practice, but one that obviously went into effect years ago. And over the course of a few years, we should look to wean ourselves away from this. But at any rate before you, it's a resolution for $1,550,000, which is the same amount that was borrowed last year.
Okay. I'd like to just make a quick statement regarding-
Can we make a motion on that before we do?
Oh, yeah. Do I have a motion?
No.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Because of the difference in the timing of the receipt of revenues and the responsibility to pay the bills promptly, Mr. Janito has advised us that a revenue anticipation note is necessary. In fiscal year ended May 31st, 2010, the village began the practice of borrowing money against water and sewer revenues to provide cash flow. This type of borrowing, known as revenue anticipation note, or RAN, has continued since that time. Mike has advised us that this is not a sound financial practice, as revenues that would normally be used at the beginning of the year for operations must be used to repay the note. And this in turn then requires us to borrow against revenues again. In short, it becomes a never-ending cycle of borrowing and repayment, and a practice to which the board and I agree is not a good one. We will be working on a plan to eliminate this project and practice, I'm sorry, this practice over time, but for now, last year's revenue anticipation note came due. We paid it in full, and we must once again issue a revenue anticipation note to provide us with the necessary cash to pay our bills going forward as they come due. This note will be repaid in less than a year. I just would also like to let you know that we have an ongoing internal investigation going on with regards to the finances of the village. Unfortunately, I cannot share with you until the process is completed, but at that time, the board and I will be prepared to share the findings of the investigation. Unfortunately, it is going to take quite a bit of time, but when Mr. Janito has completed his findings, we will be able to report that to, to the public.
Mayor, I didn't get who made the motion.
I have Joe Corrigan and Frank Hagan.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Trustees, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
If you remember, at the workshop meeting, I brought up the, told a little story about my being at Robert's Barber Shop and someone coming in and looking for Delaney Realty. Well, they did that because there's a big Delaney Realty sign right next to Robert's Barber Shop. However, Delaney Realty moved out about 10 years ago. And the question was, could a store owner have a sign that didn't describe what was in the store? And I met, I brought that to Terry Rice's attention, and he said, well, we have nothing in the law to prevent that. And I said, well, let's get something in the law to prevent that so that we don't have misleading signs. And he told me that he would have something ready. I don't know if you discussed that with you, Ron.
He didn't mention to me.
Yeah. Unfortunately, probably about 25 minutes before the meeting, Terry had a very serious family emergency. So, I apologize for that, Mr. Mian. I know that he did have something prepared. Unfortunately, I don't have access to it. Well, I, I would assume, if you would like to, I don't know.
I could add that to another public hearing. We only have 17 that night.